Good morning, welcome to the October 24th, 2023 Regular Board of County Commission Meeting. Do I have Pastor Titus' screen here? Come on up, sir.
Thank you for serving our community on behalf of the people of First Baptist Church, Merritt Island. I just say thank you for your service. Know you have our prayers not only today but throughout the year, and thank you for inviting me to begin this meeting in prayer. So would you bow your heads and join me in a spirit of prayer? Father in heaven, I thank you. I come to you this morning with a thankful heart. Thank you, God, that we have the freedom to begin an assembly like this in a posture of prayer before you. Lord, I thank you, we live in a nation that has that freedom and secures that freedom and has provided that freedom to us. Lord, I thank you for the men and women who have served this nation, sacrificing their lives to provide for our freedom. Lord, I thank you for those veterans who are present in this meeting today. Lord, thank you for the way they have honorably served for an honorable cause, and I pray that we would honor them well today. And Lord, I thank you, Father, for this privilege to pray. And God, we not only thank you for how that's been secured through the sacrifice of our military men and women, Lord, I thank you that no one has sacrificed more than you to provide for our freedom, that through the work of your great son, Jesus Christ, his perfect life, his sacrificial death on the cross for our sin, and his glorious resurrection, we have true freedom to enter into your presence and find that you have a throne that's filled with grace and mercy to help us in our time in need. And so, Lord, as we pray, we come to you for grace and mercy, that, Lord, you would give these commissioners a spirit of wisdom. Lord, as they make decisions in this day, as they set policy, and, Father, as they guide and direct our county, Lord, I pray that you would give them wisdom to not only reflect our hearts as citizens of this community, but I pray even more they would reflect your heart for this community, that they would rule in goodness and righteousness and justice in the decisions that they make for the well-being of every man, woman, and child. Lord, I pray for a spirit not only of wisdom but of unity. Help them, Lord, to be united together, not only in policy, but just as people, or give them peaceful spirits toward one another, and, Lord, help them to be united around what is right and good, not only as professionals, but as brothers and sisters, as fellow citizens of this community. And, Lord, I pray that you would give, Lord, the people who will engage in this meeting, the citizens of this community, a spirit of respect and reasonableness. Lord, may this be a meeting filled with peace that would make our leader's job a joy and not a drudgery. Lord, we ask that you would be glorified in this time together. Lord, I ask all of these things in the name of your dear son and our great Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We have a corps called the meeting to order.
Okay. Could we stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
Thank you, sir. We're, we need to approve the minutes, commissioners. Can I have a motion to?
So moved, Madam Chairperson.
Motion by Commissioner Steele.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes five zero. It's now our privilege to get to move into resolutions. I have a wonderful group of men here that are being inducted to the Florida Veterans' Hall of Fame. If you guys want to come forward, and, and I will read the resolution, and then I will turn the mic over to you all to, to address us. And as you're coming up, I want to thank you for your service to this great nation that we live in, in this day especially we're in right now with, with all the heightened activity. It makes us more aware every day how important it is to, to fight for our freedom. Do I have someone coming up to the podium this morning as well?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Don.
All right, I'm going to read this, and I'm going to turn this over to you, sir. Whereas the state of Florida is noted as one of the most military-friendly states in our nation for veterans, with over 1.5 million veterans and their families calling Florida home. Whereas Brevard County has the privilege of boasting that more than 67,620 military veterans and their family live, work, raise their families, and enjoy their life in Brevard County. And whereas throughout our residents, there are five military veterans who continue with a lifetime of service to the community, to other veterans, and to the state of Florida in both civic and military organizations. These veterans distinguish themselves with their continued commitment and dedication to the service, as evidenced by their induction into the Florida Veterans' Hall of Fame. Now therefore be it resolved that the Brevard County Commissioners recognize and acknowledge the military service and Florida Veterans' Hall of Fame inductions of Major General John Cleland, United States Army, Chief Master Sergeant Cecile Johnson, United States Air Force, Sergeant First Class Juan Santiago, United States Army, Lieutenant Colonel Harry Skip Taylor, United States Army, Captain Don Alden Weaver, United States Army, and call upon the residents of Brevard County to join them in honoring the contributions by these veterans to Florida and the United States. Commissioners, can I have a motion to recognize this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Feltner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Goodson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes five zero. Sir.
On behalf of all veterans here, we appreciate your recognition today, but more importantly, your support. Going back in my experience, 10 years ago, I stood in this spot and began to ask for money and support for veterans. You have never let veterans down, and we are, it is unbelievable for us that live in Brevard County to have the support from the people, from the commissioners, from the state, from tourist development, to be in the process of creating the best Veterans' Memorial Center and park in the state and probably the country. That doesn't happen without the county commission. I want to thank, before I read a statement, to reflect how we all feel as the newest inductee. I'm not quite sure why they made the newest guy do this, but I appreciate it, and I just want to say that all of us get to where we are because of families and spouses, and we never stop serving because that's the reason we served in the first place, to protect our country, our family, our battle buddy, and the spouses that, that we honor today. Jeannie, thank you for your support, always, after 53 years, and married in Cocoa Beach, we are indeed home. We, the Brevard County resident members of the Florida Veterans' Hall of Fame, thank you for the recognition that this honor, that this honorable counsel has given us by acknowledging our individual inductions into the Florida Veterans' Hall of Fame, our military service and to this great nation, and our continued dedication to civic duty. We now take this opportunity to express our most sincere gratitude to each and every one of you of the Board of the County Commissioners for this high honor and for your dedication in your own right to your public service for all Brevard County residents. Now let us continue to work together with one goal in mind, that is, to make Brevard County the number one place for all people to live, raise a family, work, and enjoy the numerous amenities that the Brevard County of Florida has to offer. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, God bless you.
She's coming up. You guys go up. We're going to get a picture of you later. I want to get a picture of you up on group.
Hit, hit, hit. Let's do this first. Let the county get there.
The commissioner just wanted to leave with everybody.
Okay, go ahead, sir. I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem.
I was not pleased. That's all right. He's in charge.
Looks like a rose surrounded by two thorns.
Yep. No. Big smile. Beautiful. Okay. Thank you, thank you. I want to get a picture of you. My monocle is with you. Stay like that. Stay like that.
All those medals on those guys, pretty hard to stand up, man. It's pretty impressive stuff.
Hey, Don. Stay there. Can we tighten that a little? We've got reflection. We've got reflection. Thank you.
We have to add that the county commissioner.
Stop talking, please. Smile, smile. Thank you very much. Thank you, man.
Yeah. Thank you.
Absolutely wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, all of you.
Thank you, sir.
As a Brevard born and bred, it's a pleasure to be here today. I have a speech written, but they told me I couldn't do it. All pastors, give a speech to take a collection. Ready for both of those. There you go.
Are you done?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a resolution, and with your permission, I'd like to go ahead and open and then read it for Mayor Hal Rose. Mayor Rose, great. Before I read this, as an aside, I don't know if you remember, but almost, what, 15 or 20 years ago, I knocked on your door, asked for your vote, and could not have been met by a more jovial and happy person, and despite the differences that we may have with you running a city and me at either the state or the county level, you were always a phone call away to tell me when I was doing something wrong, or coincidentally, when I was doing something right, and I really appreciate the relationship that, in all honesty, was, was very unique. And, and before I go any further, I want to tell you my regret here, and it's not a regret about you leaving the city of West Melbourne as the mayor, but it's about you leaving your position as a middle school teacher. My mom, as you know, taught in Indian Atlantic Elementary, and I have three wonderful nieces and one nephew that will be attending Hoover, and I'm disappointed that they won't have the opportunity to go through one of your classes. I'm sure they'll have great teachers, but from what I heard, they won't have the best. So I'm going to go ahead and, and read this. Resolution on behalf of the Brevard County, sorry, County Board of Commissioners, recognize the extraordinary and dedicated service of Mayor Hal Rose. Whereas Mayor Hal Rose attended Stetson University, where he received a bachelor's degree in business, and whereas retiring from elected office is Mayor Rose's second retirement, the first after a long career teaching, middle school math, career planning, and business education courses, and whereas prior to serving as an elected official, Mayor Rose was civically involved as a member of the West Melbourne Planning and Zoning Board, and whereas Mayor Rose was first elected to the West Melbourne City Council at the turn of the century and served as mayor since 2007, and whereas during Mayor Rose's tenure in office, West Melbourne has grown from a relatively sleepy town of 7,000 to a thriving, vibrant city of more than 30,000 residents, and whereas his resume includes president of the Space Coast League of Cities, chairman of the West Melbourne Lyrebird Board, promises in Brevard County Board Member, SACS Committee at Meadow Lane Elementary, Field of Dreams Board Member, member of the Brevard County Civic Military Council Group, and member of the Melbourne and Palm Bay Chambers of Commerce, and whereas Mayor Rose has worked tirelessly to maintain the city of West Melbourne as an affordable and enjoyable place to live for its residents, and whereas focusing on responsible and sustainable development with low tax rates was Mayor Rose's stated objective and a goal he accomplished while in office, and whereas Mayor Rose's leadership in the creation of the Field of Dreams was instrumental in this project, which has become an immense positive contribution to the community, and whereas Mayor Rose has built and maintained a strong relationship with his fellow elected officials through Brevard County and the state of Florida, and whereas Mayor Rose is ready to trade in his gavel for a pickleball paddle in council chamber for a cruise deck, and whereas it is, if any public official has earned a peaceful retirement allowing him to focus on his family and hobbies, it is Mayor Hal Rose. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County, the Board recognizes the selflessness and magnanimous service of Mayor Hal Rose to the city of West Melbourne and throughout the county. Thanks him for his model service as a public official, appreciates his exceptional kindness and exemplary service, and this board wishes that Mayor Rose the best in his well-earned retirement years, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 24th day of October 2023. That's the motion, Madam Chair.
The motion, do I have a second also?
So moved, Madam Chairperson. Or second, or third, or fourth, or fifth.
All right, second, third, fourth, and fifth, by Commissioner Steele. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes five zero. Thank you, sir. All you do.
Mayor.
All right, I see you got 10 minutes here, but I won't use all of them.
Oh, no, that's not you, the next guy after you.
I want to thank you for this resolution. It's, it's, it's very nice. Thank you for thinking of me. The city has done well over these years, in anybody's measure, except there's a couple of them that say, where are the cows? They all disappeared in our city. So, you know, we're, we're a growing city, we're, we're doing very well. You know, I've worked with all five of you up here in, in some way or fashion, whether bugging you with emails, phone calls, sitting in your office, or visiting you in Tallahassee, and together we got things done, and we continue to work together for the betterment of this community. We all have different leadership styles. I remember even working before I got elected office with Joe Wickham, I mean, he had his own leadership style, we know that, and, you know, we got things done, and just very proud of the city. You know, we, our city went 45 years with zero property tax, and then in 2003, we started property tax, it was a six to one vote, I voted against that, and this year, we rolled our taxes back all the way to $1.99, and I want to thank our council members and leadership or city manager for, for leading that charge. So our city is doing very well, and again, we will continue working together for the betterment of this community. Thank you all for this recognition. Thank you.
Jason, you got part of West Melbourne too, don't you?
Oh, yes, I do.
All right, gentlemen, hang on, we got a, we got one for West Melbourne here.
Sure, absolutely. We got our county up here.
Oh, there you go.
I'm good, you're bringing the dog.
I'm here too, but nice to see you.
Very quick.
All right, one, two. Oh, dog's moving. All right, one, two, three. Thank you very much.
Hey, how are you? Good job. Thanks.
Mr. Duane DeFries, we have a presentation from you today on the lagoon. Nice to have you.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
Duane DeFries, I'm here representing the IRL Council and Independent Special District of Florida and the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program. When I came in, Virginia said, when was the last time you were in chambers? And I hate to say this, but it was pre-COVID, between COVID and cancer. It's, I can't tell you how great it is to see you all face to face. I'm going to go quickly through these slides, but we just finished our eighth year. We have started a new fiscal year, and I wanted to give you a full update as fast as I can about where we stand, where we're going. Want to, you know, recognize Commissioner Feltner, who serves you on my council board of directors. So the first question I get asked everywhere I go is, how does a lagoon look? And I'm happy to say that last 24 months, we've seen some of the best water quality that we've seen probably in a decade. We shouldn't take that for granted, because it is a very tenuous moment we're at, and if you look at this slide, you can see that catastrophic collapse of seagrasses from 2011 to 2020. On the middle graph, you can see where we are as of a couple months ago. Really incredible, almost surprising recovery of seagrasses in Mosquito Lagoon, that's that lower right-hand picture. Reminds me of the old days, but as we move south, the patchiness and the rarity gets more and more. So we are in the middle, you know, of a very big battle to return this system to what we remember, but also this year, we've had a fair number of harmful algal blooms. You can see the top picture. This has been a banner year for our tourism industry with nighttime bioluminescent tours. Thankfully, those algal blooms were sporadic, patchy, intense at times, but definitely something that's manageable. As I move forward, I just want to remind everybody why we're so vulnerable. We're narrow, we're thin, we have very little flushing in the system, so everything we do on land, whether it's septic tanks or sewer, you know, or stormwater, ultimately impacts the system, and one of the things that many of our citizens don't understand is that the system doesn't flow from north to south the way we think, it's wind-driven. So when we manage, we really are managing in local east-west segments, and, and, you know, what happens in Brevard on the north end is different than the south end. It creates a lot of both confusion for the public, but also challenges for those of us who are doing management and looking to figure out where we need to prioritize management. And we've got a very heavy, you know, political presence, you know, with seven counties, 1.6 million residents, and every agency you can imagine, from local, state, and federal, engaged in the process. I serve a national estuary program that is one of 28 in the nation. We are here because of authorization by the U.S. Congress, Section 320 of the Clean Water Act, and we are one of four in the state of Florida, one of 28 in North America and Puerto Rico, and we work together on a regular basis to talk, to share data, to share, you know, successes and failures, but most important, we are non-regulatory, we are consensus-building, we work with communities. It's a federal program that's really delivered from the, the local level up. This is where we stand since 2015 and your creation of the IRL Council. Thank you for your continuing stable revenue share in our inter-local agreement. We have seen incremental increases almost every year at the federal level, which is due largely to strong bipartisan support in both the House and the Senate, but we share leadership, we share responsibility, and we share investments. And we operate in a very unusual way. I have 100 volunteers in three committees and one subcommittee, scientists, citizens, resource managers, policymakers. All of the work moves through this management committee to our board of directors who make decisions, and we handle all of that with a staff now of eight, which is the largest we've ever been since we were created. We will be moving quickly next year to update our 10-year comprehensive conservation management plan. I'll be reaching out to your staff and Virginia and her team to make sure that our plan aligns with our partners in the counties and the cities. This will take a good year, but our goal is to update that plan by 2025 and put some new high metrics on the table for where we go in the next five years. And the heart of that plan, and this will not change, is that we've identified 32 vital signs for the Indian River Lagoon. Not all get the same level of pressure and focus each year with my program, but we try to move forward throughout that wheel for clean water, number one, habitat restoration, some of the species that rely on clean water and habitat restoration, and what makes us very unique is that we also pay a lot of attention to community development, economic development, you know, and, and economy. So that whole lower part is really all about our communities and how we work together. We have a number of additional products that we put out, this is just an example. All of our documents are online for your use and for public use, including all of our annual reports, all our financial statements, all of our audits, and we will continue to fill gaps where information is necessary throughout the, the entire lagoon. One big difference this last couple of years has been the Infrastructure and Investment Act at the federal level. We worked as an association of national estuary programs early on the COVID epidemic to let Congress know that the NEPs were ready, willing, and able, even though we're really small in comparison to other agencies, that we could take any monies that they delivered to us and deliver really good return on investment value. They heard our word, we were allocated 132 million as a line item in the bipartisan infrastructure law bill. That money is being used now in two different directions in, in our program. This $909,800 annually for five years is building an infrastructure for seagrass restoration with five nurseries, talk about that in a minute, and the remainder will be used for some of our communities that are small, rural, economically, you know, or infrastructurally challenged, to bring up some of our smaller communities and give them some assistance in moving projects forward. This is an example, we've got five sites now in some stage of operation. And the heart of that plan, and this will not change, is that we've identified 32 vital signs for the Indian River Lagoon. Not all get the same level of pressure and focus each year with my program, but we try to move forward throughout that wheel for clean water, number one, habitat restoration, some of the species that rely on clean water and habitat restoration. And what makes us very unique is that we also pay a lot of attention to community development, economic development, you know, and, and economy. So, that whole lower part is really all about our communities and how we work together. We have a number of additional products that we put out. This is just an example. All of our documents are online for your use and for public use, including all of our annual reports, all our financial statements, all of our audits. And we will continue to fill gaps where information is necessary throughout the, the entire lagoon. One big difference this last couple of years has been the Infrastructure and Investment Act at the federal level. We worked as an association of national estuary programs early on the COVID epidemic to let Congress know that the NEPs were ready, willing, and able, even though we're really small in comparison to other agencies, that we could take any monies that they delivered to us and deliver really good return on investment value. They heard our word. We were allocated $132 million as a line item in the bipartisan infrastructure law bill. That money is being used now in two different directions in, in our program. This $909,800 annually for five years is building an infrastructure for seagrass restoration with five nurseries. Talk about that in a minute. And the remainder will be used for some of our communities that are small, rural, economically, you know, or infrastructurally challenged, to bring up some of our smaller communities and give them some assistance in moving projects forward. This is an example. We've got five sites now in some stage of operation. I want you to pay close attention, though, to that right hand. If anybody in the, you know, public says, you know, planting seagrasses is a waste of time, that is an outplanting at Florida Oceanographic Society, one year of growth. And you can see the difference between the barren outside area where we have herbivory cages. And we will be doing this in selected areas, but it's important to note, we are not planting our way to over 40,000 acres of lost seagrasses. We are only going to help accelerate nature, because the goal is still water quality. What you are doing here in the county is historic with the Save Our Indian River Lagoon program, and I'll speak to that in a minute. The other big historic moment was Governor DeSantis's executive order, 2306. Created the Indian River Lagoon Protection Program, allocated with legislative support, $100 million this year. DEP is now going through numerous proposals for those dollars. I know there were a number of proposals from this county. The Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program stood down on that and said, we will support you. We are not going to chase those dollars as a state agency. And, and that's where we are right now. We're ready to help DEP, the governor's office, and move that program forward in any way they need us. We've got a new license plate, and many of you know, we've had a license plate for a long time. This is now being managed through our program. All of the license plate fees stay within the county that those license plates are bought. And if you're running up and down I-95, you're going to see a few billboards as we roll out a campaign. We have not seen a lot of money from this, but it does fund projects that are on the ground. So, 5% can be used for marketing. There are no overhead or administrative fees. And then lastly, and I'm going to go through these really quick, because I have 35 seconds, is that we provide free grant writing support to anybody who needs it. It's a line item that I put in our budget every year. We have three contracted professional grant writers. I think we assisted in 10 proposals just in the last two months. And this is first come, first served. So, we will provide that service to projects that protect the lagoon until the money runs out. This is a full accounting of where your dollars have gone throughout the NEP over the eight years of our operation by county. You can see 195 projects.
I'll go ahead and finish that up, then we're going to ask you questions.
Okay. And 14.6 million. And I'm just going to fast forward to this. When you hear people say, nobody's doing anything, we also assemble all the projects that are being done by our partners that are not funded through our program. This year, 301 projects and 870 over the last three years. So, we are working hard to make this happen, and I just want to thank you and the board, and especially the citizens of Brevard County. You know, I get to look at 28 national estuary programs. I don't know that there's a single county in the nation that's making the level of commitment that you are through this oral program and with your very dedicated and hard-working staff. So, thank you.
Mr. DeFries, I think you could probably talk two hours like butter on this subject. You, you definitely know your stuff. Can we go to this slide, if you wouldn't mind? It might have been back one slide. I, I think that's something that'd be really good for the community to see. And it's, it's a overall view of just the projects that's been completed many this year.
Yeah, so, this actually shows how we distribute. We, we release four RFPs every single year in the fall. We have four active right now in water quality, habitat restoration, community-based restoration, science, and monitoring. Sometime in December or January, we'll release our small grants program. We realize that a lot of small NGOs, teachers just can't avail themselves of big competitive grants. And so, anywhere from $500 to $5,000, easy entry. And we really like that program, and it's amazing what a small grant can do to transform a small organization. And then the, that very new RFP for our small local communities sometime in, in 2024, once we set up a, a policy and a process.
Thank you, sir. I, I do want to state that your passion for, for all of these projects is, is just, it's wonderful. And you and we have Ms. Virginia, too. We, we've got the two best people fighting for our lagoon. I, I believe in my heart with, with, with all the knowledge and, and the, the, what's the word I'm looking for? The direction that we need to have with this. Also want to note that we're the only place that I know of that did a self-imposed tax to help clean up the lagoon. So, kudos to all the citizens here as well. And I remember when I was running, I had a, a campaign manager that said, Rita, you just got to quit putting the bad stuff in and start getting the bad stuff out. And I thought, that sounds pretty simple. But basically, you do all those technical things to, to accomplish those things. And, and I knew it would take a long time, so we're starting to see some results, but we're, we're nowhere near anywhere where we need to be yet. So, this is, this is probably a lifetime generational project, and I want to thank you for all you've put into it. Heaven knows, you've been through a lot of challenges, and you have just stayed the course working on this project, and I just can't thank you enough, sir.
Well, thank you. And it's nothing more important to this community than clean water. You know, that's the bottom line. Every business, every tourism industry, every home appraisal, if the lagoon has dirty water, we have problems. And so, that's what we're working to resolve.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Felton?
Thanks for coming here today and giving us an update. I'll just say, as the commissioner on the NEP for Brevard, I really thank Dwayne, Dr. DeFries and his staff. They're the organization that provides focus for the multiple counties and, but Brevard is leading the way in, in the lagoon cleanup. And, but I, I appreciate what you do at the NEP. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time, and if you ever need anything, just let us know.
And if you ever need anything, let us know. Thank you.
We do. Thank you. You trying to put a light on? Bottom one. Oh, you're on. Commissioner Steele?
Thank you. Madam Chairperson, I'd like a moment of personal privilege, if you don't mind. And real quickly, I want to tell you that I've worked with Dr. DeFries for probably 35 to 40 years now. And there's no finer human being that I could have ever met in my entire life that's dedicated themselves to Brevard County like Dwayne DeFries. The challenges that he's overcome have been unbelievable, and yet, that does not hesitate him at all from being probably the most brilliant scientist that I know that we have on the staff. And just want to tell you, Dwayne, that we really, really appreciate you. So, thank you for that. Secondly, I talked to Christine Zonka before I got appointed, and I asked Christine, or Christine asked me, what are you going to do about staff when you get elected? Or when I get appointed? And I said, well, that's simple. You have the most brilliant staff I know of, and the person that led the staff there is Danielle Stern. And I just wanted to have Danielle stand up and recognize her today. It's her birthday. So, happy birthday, Danielle. Thank you so much for all you do. Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
Thank you. You can make the rest of us look bad now, we've missed birthdays. I do want to do a quick shout-out, since you said that. Commissioner Zonka's here with us this morning, and it's always such an honor to have you back in the House, ma'am. Thank you. All right, we are moving into consent agenda. Commissioners, I have one card on F2 from Ms. Sandra Sullivan, but do you have any items you'd like to have pulled? No? Ms. Sullivan?
Good morning, Sandra Sullivan. So, I just wanted to thank you for this project. So, this is a resiliency project to vertically locate critical stormwater infrastructure necessary to evaluate the extent of inundation in the Indian River Lagoon due to storm surge and sea level rise. And as you know, like, going over 520 and, and evaluation of the outfalls, which FDOT did a presentation recently showing actually the, the outfalls in the area of Satellite Beach and South Patrick Shores, including Hightower. And that these are very vulnerable to storm events and sea level rise. So, I'm very, I just wanted to commend you for this extension of this project and leveraging grant money to do it. And then to that point, so, when we have a king tide, state, the 520 causeway is, can be flooded. This time of year, in the fall, the rivers are always the highest, much higher than the rest of the year. And it makes us very vulnerable in the time of a hurricane coming. Should we have one? Tammy's out there coming, and they don't know if it's going to hit the East Coast or not. But should we, when we are hit with a hurricane in the fall this time of year, the rivers are very high, and I guess those outfalls would be problematic. This is Merritt Island. Give you an idea, that's a 10-year storm event. That's not 100-year storm event. That's a 10-year storm event. And you can see, most of it's underwater. Okay? So, this is very important. This is the evacuation area of the Barrier Island. And of course, being able to get off the Barrier Island is related, the storm surge. We're under nine, six to nine-plus feet of storm surge. And so, the evacuation of the Barrier Island is very important. So, this data will be very helpful in prioritizing. And then, one other piece of fact about 520 is, last year, we were at 96% capacity. We're at 99% capacity on that road. So, getting people off even right now at 99% capacity, then you add flooding to that pre-landfall on that causeway, how do you get people off the Barrier Island? This is a safety issue, so I just wanted to thank you. This is a very important study that you're doing, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. That was a nice presentation this morning. Commissioners, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
I think I had a motion by Goodson, a second by Commissioner Steele. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. We are moving into public hearings, item G1.
Morning, Commissioners. Item G1 is a public hearing to consider amending Section 2-176 Brevard County Code in order to streamline the code enforcement process for foreclosures and actions to recover money judgments to master the approval requirements found in the state statute. The Board issued legislative intent permission to advertise this amendment on September 19.
Commissioners, I have no cards on this.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Felton.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Steele. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0, item G2.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item G2 is a public hearing for our citizen participation plan. This is an update to an existing plan. Is a requirement by HUD that we have a process in place to accept input from citizens into the different reports and plans that go to our federal funding. The main update to this plan has been formatting and then allowing for acceptance of public comments and posting on the county's website.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I have no cards on this item.
Madam Chairperson, I move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Steele.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tabia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0, item G3.
Again, good morning, Commissioners. This public hearing is for assessment of fair housing. It is another plan that is required by HUD for our funding. Primarily, this covers and looks at the different housing types within the county itself and looks at barriers. There are some activities included in this and actions having to do with public outreach and education, creating affordable rental housing, which we already work towards, and aligning initiatives to increase opportunity for undisturbed residents, which we also are continuously working towards. We did receive two comments during the public comment period on this. Neither actually were tied to or relating to the plan itself.
Madam Chairperson, I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Steele.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tabia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. Mr. Gold, thank you for all you do. You got us through a lot of.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Commissioner.
Thank you for all you do. You've gotten us through a lot of challenging times in the past.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Great staff.
Thank you. I do have one card on this item, Commissioners.
G4 is a public hearing to consider an amendment to Section 62-2 Brevard County Code in order to add a definition of major transit stop. This is being requested in order to comply with the Live Local Act, which constipates such a definition being in the county's land development code, in order to carry out certain mandates relating to consideration of reduced parking requirements. The Board issued legislative intent permission to advertise for this item on September 12. Specifically, language matching option A in the agenda report was approved for legislative intent. The Building and Construction Advisory Committee unanimously recommended approval of that language. The Planning and Zoning Board recommends adopting a definition that would qualify all Brevard County transit-operated bus stops as major transit stops. That definition is listed as option B in the agenda report.
Good morning, Sandra. Good morning, Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So, the Live Local Act, I call the you-will-own-nothing-and-be-happy law, because what it does is, it's socialism. It gives a 75% discount to developers developing low-income and middle-income housing. Of course, that's the greater problem. So, before you, today, you have option A and option B. Option A is to adopt the FDOT definition for a major transit stop. And when you search the internet, you see lots of legal opinions that are consistent with the FDOT definition. If you choose to do the one that came before the P and Z, I'm suggesting that this board is encouraging socialism. And that would very much surprise me as elected Republicans. Now, I'm aware, attending all of the charter review meetings and being at a lot of meetings, that is lobbyists pushing this bill. And somebody's going to have to pick up the tab. So, if you do the one that allows any bus stop to be a major transit stop, that doesn't meet any definition online, then what you're doing is you're facilitating development with more density on the Barrier Island where we have evacuation issues. And just as a, aside, I know most of you don't attend the TPO meetings, which is unfortunate, but they had a presentation by Eastern Central Regional Planning Council where they came in and they described that we're going to get to a point where we can't widen our roads to meet the capacity needs because of growth in Florida. And their presentation was about moving people to urban centers to take people out of their cars and keep them in an isolated area. Everything that they talked about was 15-minute cities. Now, I wouldn't imagine myself saying that a year ago. And yet, here we are in state documents talking about that, and that's really what this tax, what this is about, SB 102. This is socialism, but you're also putting, by adopting a more generous definition, you'll be putting the people who live on the Barrier Island at risk for getting off the Barrier Island. And it's socialism. It's an automatic 75% discount for middle-income housing, which means the real middle America, the people that, the American dream of owning your own home and raising your family, we're going to be the ones burdened with higher tax rates, because somebody's got to pay for the roads, somebody's got to pay for police and fire. And let's face it, impact fees haven't been updated in 20 to 32 years, and you guys are relying on property taxes to pay for infrastructure.
Thank you. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just have a motion to adopt option A, the attached ordinance amendment with a staff-proposed definition of major transit stop as modeled after the Florida Department of Transportation, definition of transit center.
I'll second.
That's the motion.
I'm a motion, a second. Commissioner Steele, is that a new light, sir?
I wave.
He waves, okay.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0. Moving into item G5. Mr. Goodson, this is your district, sir.
I have no issue with this. Madam Chair, make a motion, move a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Do you want to go ahead and just let us know what it is real quick for the public?
Yes, ma'am. This is a petition to vacate a public right-of-way on Aspenel Avenue and an unnamed right-of-way.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tabia, old light.
That's the old light.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 5-0, item G5.
All right, Madam Chair, I have no issue with this. Madam Chair, I have no issue with this. I make a motion for approval.
A second.
I'm sorry, item G6. I have a motion and a second on item G6. Do you want to let?
This is a resolution, exchange agreement, and lease agreement from 890 Courtney LLC for lift station C17 relocation and reconstruction project. No issues.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. And to item G7. Commissioner Zonka, do you have a card on this?
I'll just open. Just so nice to see you.
Item G7 is an ordinance that would amend Chapter 14 of the county code to move the current inspection of animal care facilities, which includes boarding facilities, kennels, grooming facilities, things like that, from under the Department of Health and into the Brevard County Sheriff's Office Animal Services Division. The Department of Health requested the change, and Brevard County Sheriff's Office is supportive of it.
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Felton.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Steele. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. Commissioner Zonka, I just have to tell you though, all of the changes you're making over there, you're really streamlining everything. It's pretty remarkable. I hear a lot of good things, by the way. All the people that work there are like you, too.
You've been talking to Milo, who you've been talking to.
Every now and then, he's a lot of fun, too. Okay, we're moving into item I1.
Good morning, Commissioner. I1 is a policy that we're asking the Board to consider for the evaluation procedures of development proposals pursuant to the Live Local Act. In March of 2023, Governor DeSantis signed that into law, and it was to encourage and facilitate affordable housing. And in there, it contains several elements of land use, related to land use in this policy is just to help staff establish a procedure for review and enforcement of those. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Steele, are you okay if I do the card first?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Ms. Sandra Sullivan.
Good morning, Sandra Sullivan. So affordable housing for everyone, right? We have 1,000 people a day coming into Florida. We have to have somewhere to put them. That's what one of the state reps said the other day. And as I said, I call this "you will own nothing and will be happy." WEF. Never would have imagined me saying it. This is socialism. SB 102 is socialism. It's one thing to have it for low-income housing, it's another thing for it to be everyday middle-class America housing. An AMI of 120 for a family of four is almost $98,000. So we're going to give those developers a 75% discount on their property taxes. Somebody's going to have to make that up. So in attending the Affordable Housing Summit, it said, "If a proposed project satisfies the existing LDRs, Land Development Regulations, and comprehensive plan, project must be administratively approved." So let's look at what Orlando did. Orlando said, "Well, SB 102 doesn't really do much for us because our LDRs, for example, prohibit next to single-family homes, which are only allowed to have four density units per acre." So Brevard County, in your LDRs, in Section 62, says, "Developments located in unincorporated Brevard County within any coastal high-hazard area defined in the comprehensive plan or on any barrier islands are not eligible for density bonus under this section." But you guys are ignoring that. So you're taking, and you're allowing this in more places than it should be. According to the Affordable Housing Coalition, they say, "Section 7 does not specify whether the highest allowed density refers to by right densities or whether it includes bonus densities." We have commissioners here that want to increase density on the Barrier Island. And that's what happened when the vote was taken under Board Reports by Commissioner Tabia last year, and the South Beaches then moved to an area of critical concern. So we have a lot of congestion, and we have a, right now, $699 million deficit in capacity needs for transportation. And my question is, here's that, this is from your 2024 budget. Okay? So you got State Road 520, and let's face it, in your plans, you've got a lot of workforce housing, affordable housing to go into Merritt Island, Barrier Island. But that highway's gone from 93% to 99% capacity. Who's going to pay for that? You guys don't have impact fees updated for transportation in 23 years. That was Merritt, that was 520 this week, 99% capacity. But most of you don't show to TPO to even know the issues.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Are you running for office somewhere soon, Merritt Island or something?
You know something? I've been doing this for five years.
I'm just wondering if you're getting ready. That's my question, were you getting ready to run for?
No, I'm not running for office.
Okay, I was just wondering, thank you.
This is because I care about Brevard.
I'm all done, thank you. You're done. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Steele.
Always interesting being on the county commission. First of all, I'd like to let everybody in the audience know that Senate Bill 102 is a law. It is passed by the legislature. The governor promoted it, and I'll tell you why the governor promoted it. Short-term rentals are overabundant in Brevard County. As a result, they're everywhere that you can see. Now, what that's done is it's increased the value of homes, and I'm a private property rights guy, and I'm all for that, if they're in the right location. But what's going on is big corporations are coming in, they're buying blocks and blocks of housings, and they're using short-term rentals. And they're starting to get $1,500, $2,000 a week, and by the end of the, end of the month, they got $8,000 a month coming in. It doesn't take you too much to figure out what they're going to get in a year's basis. So what's that do to the value? The value skyrockets, and as a result of that, nobody can afford to buy a house anymore. The governor got involved in this and said, "I'm tired of this. We need to give some incentives for people to bring low, moderate housing in specific areas." So that's why the bill was passed, that's why it's gone. There is no choice from Mr. Cawkins. He can do an ordinance, and we're doing that, and he's done a great job with it. But it's the law. We're not trying, we can't overturn the law, Ms. Sullivan, we just can't. Okay, well, thank you very much. Run for the legislature, and then you can do that.
Well, you know, I think it's a good idea, actually. The business I work in, people can't even rent places right now. We have to do something. We have a voter-approved trust fund that we set up to try to get affordable housing. I mean, the community's in, Brevard County's in on this project.
So that's all I wanted to just set the record straight on Senate Bill 102.
I appreciate it. I didn't think about the, the people coming in renting places with driving up prices either, Commissioner Steele, that's, I didn't think about that. You're right. It's an incredible day we're in trying to get people into homes, so. Commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If you know anything about the state of Florida in a Senate Bill 102, good intentions, great intentions, there's going to be issues with it.
Sure.
And those might even go back to Tallahassee be worked out, or might be, I would assume they'd have to. So I hope for the best. Everything you say and do sometimes ends up in a pile of rubble. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hopefully, we're able to maneuver through it with a little common sense here moving forward. Let's go with the rubble, sir. Okay. Commissioner Felton, are you trying to push a button? Okay. Very good. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Well, I move to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tabia. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. Item I2.
I2 is a request for acknowledgement and receipt of a report regarding resort dwellings and seeking related board direction. On August 22nd, the Board requested staff to prepare a report regarding enforcement of unpermitted resort dwellings. Specifically, the Board directed staff to consider proactive code enforcement, use of software improvements, and fine structures. This report is attached to the agenda. Also included are several options for board consideration on providing direction. These include procuring software to identify illicit resort dwellings, adopting a proactive enforcement model for resort dwellings for code enforcement and fire prevention, and adopting a registration program.
Commissioner Steele, thank you for championing this. I do have one card on the subject.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Good morning, Sandra Sullivan. So I wanted to thank you for doing this particular bill. So as you so stated, the short-term rentals has become quite a problem and is actually in certain communities, for example, Cocoa Beach is even destroying single-family communities and has taken a lot of property off the market that would otherwise be rentals, supply and demand. We are a capitalist country, so, but we've, you know, for rules, really what the state needed to do is address this issue. We've had a 100% increase in the number of short-term rentals according to the TDT data that came out in the meeting. So I'm appreciative of this. I would also encourage an additional factor for you guys to consider, and that is, in my community, which has a lot of these illegal rentals, and I've reported a few myself, somebody will buy, an investor will buy, they'll rent it as a short-term rental, it'll get reported. Code enforcement did a magnificent job, and I can't, I can't say enough about them. The staff there are really amazing. But then that owner sells to another investor, who then turns around and does exactly the same thing, and you're reporting it again. If there was a way to put on the property appraiser's site that a property is a short-term rental, because people in my community, a friend of mine, she bought a home, and in the listing, it said, this, you can do this as a short-term rental. And she bought it, and she was really upset because she couldn't, she couldn't do that. And she's not doing it. She respects the rules. But some people don't respect the rules. So if, if there could be some, some way, even if it was just in the county, unincorporated areas to update the property appraisers' office, that a buyer buying a home can check those records, whether it can be, it would help clear up. Because there's a lot of people that don't know and make a mistake and rent it and just didn't want to wear. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Steele, you're on.
I'm certainly going to mark this day down as one of the favorite days of my entire life because Sandra Sullivan and I agree on an issue. So thank you, Sandra. First of all, let me share with you that for the last three years, I have fought as a lobbyist, and I'm proud to be a lobbyist, Ms. Sullivan, the short-term rental scenario in Brevard County and in the state of Florida. Airbnb has contributed millions and millions and millions of dollars to every legislator, every senator that's in Tallahassee. Now, what's happened with that is, is the state of Florida has come in and they preempted almost everything that you can imagine with short-term rentals. So as a result of that, you can put a short-term rental just about anywhere unless you had an ordinance in place prior to 2011. Now, why am I trying to get a handle on this? Because I cannot stand people that are unfair and don't pay their fair share. We talked to a company called Deckard Technology, and Tad, and Brian, and a variety of other folks were in a meeting, and we listened to them very, very carefully. I'm not saying that Deckard Technology is the person that we would pick, but here's what came out of that meeting, and at some point in time, I would love for every commissioner to hear that presentation. One of the things we found out is Deckard Technology, every night, scans every newspaper, every periodical, every, just the thing that you can imagine, to determine who is putting out ads for rentals in the area. Now, when they do that, they can find out whether or not those are legal rentals or not legal rentals. And if they're an illegal rental, they automatically file a letter that goes to that particular person that said, "We've noticed on October 28th, or 3rd, or whatever the date would be, that you have advertised your property as a short-term rental, and you're not in compliance with the law of registration," or whatever the law might be in a specific area. So for how long they have been circumventing the tax that goes to TDC, for how long they have been fooling the property appraiser, for how long the tax collector hasn't been able to collect taxes, we are in just a big giant mess. Now, I don't know the percentages, but I can tell you one thing. I think everybody knows that the percentages are very, very, very high of unregistered, illegal, short-term rentals. Those people are breaking the law, and they are taking money away from each and every one of us. I do not like a county where we do, are proactive with things like code enforcement. It just bothers me to have to go after people. But in this particular case, I don't think we have a choice. We have to be proactive, we have to go forward to determine who's doing short-term rentals illegally, and we have to make sure they're paying their fair share. Well, not only help TDC, it will help the Brevard County Property Appraiser, it will help the tax collector, and it'll help everybody else. And it'll put people in compliance with what the law is. So I'm asking, at some point in time, for us to be able to go out and do an RFP or RFB to determine what kind of technology we need to make sure that we can be proactive and, in fact, go after the people that are breaking the law and put them in compliance with the law. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tabia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I wanted to begin, I know it's a little self-serving here, but just mention what a great job that staff did on this report. I think overwhelmingly, the work product, no matter where you stand on this issue, was done extremely well. I do have one point with the fiscal impact and one other question, Madam Chair, for staff, if that's okay.
Please, sir.
The person that spoke up here, it was a different person, they had a beard. They mentioned this was eight hours. Was, was this an eight-hour project, or did this in fact take longer than eight hours?
For myself, it was about 22 hours.
Okay, so I appreciate the optimism, and it looked like it took a lot more than that. This was a very well-done report, and I appreciate that. The fiscal impact, though, is something, and we discussed this, and, but I think the fiscal impact is off a little bit. And the reason that I think the fiscal impact is off on this is we have $150,000 for code enforcement employees if we go in that direction, roughly $50,000 in software costs, $70,000 in fire protection personnel. Here's where the difference is. $50 was put in there to cover the cost of the software, and multiplied by that 1,245 estimate, which is merely an estimate, but I think that's a little bit unreasonable, being Rentalscape mentioned that the bulk of those were unlawful. In fact, 1,000 of eight, they said roughly of the 1,247. So if we take that new lawful group of 237, and we multiply that by $50, we don't get the 50,000. We only get about 11,800. So I think we have to add, you know, that $35,000 plus in there. So we're looking at somewhere at a recurring cost of about $260,000, I think is a more reasonable estimate of that. We can disagree on policy, but our numbers, I think, should be pretty close. There's lots of moving parts here, and as we go through that, I just wanted to lay my cards on the table so everyone would know, you know, where I was as we tried to cobble all of these things together. And a good, another, I think the, the report laid out the decision points. Unfortunately, they're not binary, so there are many, many different. So let me start off with what I would not support, and give some reasons, and then end up what I, what I would support. Again, you may not need my vote, I just wanted to put it down. I'm, I'm not going to support a new fee, whether it's $50 to cover, or whether it's the $220 needed to cover that estimated $50,000 software cost that I think is, is unreasonable. I'm not going to support new regulations. Now, there would be the imposing new regulations on lawfully operating resort dwellings if we did this. There are certain that are permitted already, and this would add new regulations on those. And in all honesty, I think they're unreasonable regulations. An example would be, it mentioned on Page 7 of the report, background checks. I think it's unreasonable to have the owner of the Airbnb do a background check on every tenant. I don't know where those background checks would go. I don't know whether it'd be Level 1 or Level 2 with fingerprinting. So there's a lot of issues with adding those new regulations. We've done noise ordinances here very recently, so I think we've, we've added some good stuff to add protections out there. But, and I think there are, as Commissioner Steele mentioned, there's a lot of scanning that goes on here. goes on here. I think, you know, that, that, that's very Orwellian. It scares me a little bit. In fact, it scares me a lot. It's not just the scanning of, of Airbnb, or Expedia. I looked at news reports, and they're scanning social media, and, you know, Facebook, and tweets, and all this stuff. So let me, you know, let me be, I don't want to sound like too much of a Luddite, which I learned from the captain of, of, of the port, but this is a little bit scary. Elon Musk and 27,000 other technologists signed a letter warning of the security concerns and the inaccuracies of AI. AI systems have been built, and they're biased regarding gender and ethnicity. AI systems lead to reductions in data privacy. Hackers can use AI to create more sophisticated attacks. So what I did, and my office did, was look at some scenarios where AI was created, and then bad things happened. And we found a bunch of them, and let me give you some. Metropolis, 2001 Space Odyssey, Westworld, Blade Runner, War Games, Terminator, Daryl, Short Circuit, Robocop, Short Circuit 2, Terminator 2: Judgment Day, Austin Powers: International Man of Mystery, Matrix: Resident Evil, The Matrix Reloaded, Terminator 3, The Matrix: Revolutions, iRobot: Stealth, Resident Evil, Mithro Robinson's WALL-E, Terminator Salvation, Iron Man 2, Tron Legacy, The Avengers: Prometheus, Resident Evil: Retribution, Total Recall, Iron Man 3, Oblivion: Interstellar, Transcendence, X Machina, Tomorrowland, Terminator 3, sorry, Terminator Genesis, aka Terminator 5, Resident Evil: The Final Chapter, Alien Covenant, Blade Runner 2049, Terminator: Dark Fate, Jexi: The Matrix: Resurrection, Megan: The Creator, Mission: Impossible: Dead Reckoning Part 2. And I only can assume that Mission, Mission: Impossible: Dead Reckoning Part 2 will also include that, but I'm not positive. And I know this is a little bit of a stretch, but our, our office needed a little fun here to look where Air, what? Captain Mar, I, I left the, tried to leave Avengers, most of that Avengers stuff out, because I can't follow any of that stuff. My point, my point is, I'm a little skeptical about AI going through our, our personal, and if they, if they limited it to just Airbnb sites, or Expedia, I could be there, but we don't know how deep these things are going. So that being said, let me tell you what I, I do support, and where I'm willing to go, and, and where I have been willing to go in the past. First of all, I think it was brought, the homestead. Proactive reporting of homestead fraud to the Brevard County property appraiser, moving forward. I, I think that we need to do that. I think retroactive reporting instances of fraud that are currently happening also have to be done. People that are not, as you mentioned, not paying their fair share, that we have document proof of, that that needs to, to be taken care of. And the second thing, and would be the creation of a portal that allows citizens to check whether it is legal or not to operate a resort dwelling on a specific piece of property. In fact, I suggested this very thing, February 11th, 2020, you can go back and check the video. At the time, we were unable to move forward due to the resources, and aligning the various zoning codes. At the time, we had a number of property owners call our office, and it was extremely difficult to figure out whether it was a, an allowable use in that particular zoning. And we called up the department, they had trouble looking at that. If we, if we have trouble figuring this out, I, I can't imagine that citizens aren't going through that same thing. So I would be more than willing to go through and support an RFP for some sort of software that we can identify, not only us, but citizens can identify whether or not it's a permitted use. It would be much easier for reporting, because if you had a neighbor that was doing an Airbnb, you could plug it in, find out it was a permitted use, and therefore you wouldn't need to report. And if it, if it was not a permitted use, then there would be a quick measure instead of leaving the onus on the county to do that. So those two things, right now, I would be willing to support, but as far as it comes with the registration, and using AI to go searching through all these records, there's no way that I could support that. So that's where I am. I appreciate everyone's opinion on all this stuff, but just wanted to put my cards on the table as we move forward.
Thank you. You know, I really always appreciate Commissioner Tobias's research, and I, I knew pretty much what was going to be said today from Commissioner Tobias. He's, he's got excellent research capabilities, and I appreciate what he's said. However, I don't know of any county or city that doesn't charge a registration fee for registering a short-term rental. 50 bucks? Are you kidding me? That's ridiculously low, and it would put everybody in compliance with what we need to do. Now, the amount of money that we collect from the TDC taxes, and the additional things from the property appraisers office, is going to, I, I don't know what that number's going to be. I don't know what the percentages is, but I can guarantee you, it's going to put a lot more money in our, in our coffers, and it's going to stop people from breaking the friggin' law. Now, I do have a problem, and I do get what Commissioner Tobias is saying about AI. It bothers me, too. But you know what bothers me more? Is people breaking the law and taking advantage of each and every one of us, when it comes to paying their share of what is supposed to be paid. So we can take this RFB and, and place whatever we want to do in it. The information that comes to Brevard County can be kept privileged. We can take a look at it and not let it out anyplace else. We've got to get a handle on this. The state of Florida is preempting everything we do. Anytime we pass one thing for short-term rentals, the state's right back in there, because Airbnb is killing us. And I'm also on a, just a tantrum with the state of Florida on preemptive local law. We do it all the time, and if we don't stop it, we're going to be hurt very seriously. So I appreciate Representative, he was at one time, Commissioner Tobias's logic and his understanding, and I, and I, on the AI stuff, I get it. Scares me a little bit, too. But it scares me more not to be able to collect our fair share of what's proper. And for those people that aren't paying it heads up, you need to know that if you're doing something illegal, Brevard County's going to put you on notice, that you need to comply with the law. So I asked the Commission Day to come up with maybe a, a different RFB that keeps the AI confidential, or do something that would at least alleviate some of the concerns Commissioner Tobias has. And I tell you, if we don't start charging a registration fee, we're silly. No, everybody charges a registration fee. I mean, if you, everybody here has seen, and just since I've been on the board, the craziness with Marco Polo porn pool parties. This is nuts. It's got to stop, and we've got to get in compliance with the law. So I, I'm pleading for you today to do something proactive, instead of being reactive, and, and that's the purpose for doing this today. But thank you, Commissioner Tobias. I agree with some of those issues. So how we settle them and solve them is up to the commission. Thank you.
Commissioner, hold, Felton, hold just a second. Commissioner Goodson, I've seen you hit your light a few times. Were you trying to get in?
No.
Okay.
Not now.
Okay, Commissioner Felton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I don't think the software is going to be the, the be-all. It, it may help you identify some things, but I, I don't think it'll be the, it'll be the fi, the final answer. I'll, I'll say this. The property appraiser went through a homestead audit, and engaged with the county, and the school board, and some municipalities in a, a homestead audit, and they hired tax management associates to identify properties. Now, ultimately, it was up to the property appraiser to investigate, take a look at that, and determine whether those properties were rented, or whatever the case was. They did that for one year. So you could potentially, you know, have a, an agreement with one of these software companies, simply for a year. If it doesn't work out, then that's the end of it, and don't do it the next year. On the registration, I'm less interested in a, in more fees than I am having a tax accountant number attached to the remittance of short-term rental tax. If we could get that one thing, and I don't know, I mean, the legislature hasn't made that provision yet, but if we had that one thing, it would, it would fix all of this. Because you would very simply see that a, a property is at least collecting and remitting short-term rental tax. However, they're doing a short-term rental where they're not supposed to do it. So I, I think some of those sorts of fixes would, would probably be more meaningful. But again, the software is something that you could try for a year, and the, the next year decide not to do it, so.
Mr. Goodson, would you kind of chime in a little bit? You're, you're a little more aware of this stuff from the state of Florida as well.
Well, Madam Chair, thank you. But, but Jason's right.
Your microphone's not on?
No, he's on.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm looking at the wrong thing. Unless we're both blind, that's on.
Yeah, well, that's, we're both old, I know that.
Well, both Tobias and Commissioner Steele have good points, but at the same token, if you tried it, I agree with Felton, too. Try it for a year. If you don't like it, then don't do it again. I don't think if you are trying to correct people from breaking the law, it's going to affect them in any fashion. Because if you're accustomed to breaking the law, you'll just find out another way to break the law. I'm not a big fan of Airbnbs. They're permitted in the county, but some of them operate outside of the permitted area. Would I be upset if I owned a home? Of course I would be. Do we need to do something? I think we need to possibly, like Commissioner Felton said, try it a year, see what kind of results you get. If it doesn't warrant it again, then you could drop it. That's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, that's some wisdom being brought in. A quick question. County attorney, is there an ability to use TDC funds to fund the software for the first year, because it would generate more TDC funds? Would that be a possibility?
Potentially. I'll have to look at that. I hadn't considered that before. It's a good question. I will look at that.
Okay. And then, another question I have for you, I was just sitting here thinking, writing down some notes. Is there a possible way to put fine or a fee on people who are violating the law that way, that could help generate funds for this as well? Is there, but we did this before with the, the people that were abusing the, the grease going into the pipes. We put an extra fee on them. Would it be possible for, if people are breaking the law and do this, that we were allowed to put a, impose a, a fine on them to help cover some of these costs, if we went in this direction?
I'll, I'll look at further options, but typically, the routes that we have available to us are through the code enforcement process under Chapter 162, which provides for fines of up to $1,000 a day for violations. Or we have a general ordinance violation, which is punishable by up to $500, or 60 days in jail. Those are the tools we typically have for enforcement for ordinance violations.
Okay, so I, I would support the going out for an RFP to maybe let this run for a year, and see if it makes a change or a difference, to help the community to have a better life that, that we're in. As far as the AI, I get it. But you know what? If you have Siri or Alexa on your phone, everybody's running everything on you. I, I recommend that you pay attention to the technology around you, because it's already out there. I can be talking about something in the house, and all of a sudden, my phone starts popping up ads for things all day long, and it's like, man. So just a word of wisdom out there, too, and watch your kids on these things as well. It's, it's pretty scary. So Commissioner Steele, I would support a motion, if you wanted to make one, to go out for an RFP. Yeah, in just a second. If you want to go out for an RFP, and let's do a, a trial for a year and see how it goes. And I would also like to see if it's possible to use 50,000 of the TDC funds, because I think that would generate some income as well. I agree with the tax receipts and, and those types of things, but if, it's, it's hard to be proactive on this. You almost can't. But if we can get something set up, and so that the people are having to get their taxes in line, and that we're able to impose fees on them for breaking the law, that, that might not be a bad thing, just even to put out to the public that we're starting to do this. So that, I would support that. Commissioner Felton?
I apologize, Madam Chair. I didn't mean to.
It's all right. You're excited.
No. I just wanted to say, before we started voting on the motion, I don't, I don't think any software is going to generate more short-term rental tax that they're not already getting. Because, I mean, Airbnb, and VRBO, and Expedia, and all of them, they did, they, they finally conceded with the state, and said, "We'll collect the, the tax," and they remit it to the county. What you don't have, though, is, it is remitted in one check to the tax collector. There's, there's nothing to say that they collect it for any one property. So, but I don't think you can book a property through any of those websites without the short-term rental tax being collected for the county. So I don't, I don't think that'll end up in producing any more money for the, the TDC. I think it will potentially identify properties that are doing short-term rentals in areas where they shouldn't be doing it. I think that's something totally different. The other thing we haven't talked, talked about is the issue of whether code enforcement can be proactive in this. So our code enforcement is strictly reactive agency, and, you know, we haven't considered that yet. Thanks.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm going to piggyback off what Commissioner Felton said, except go a little bit further. I, I'm not making this as a justification, but I think we'll probably see substantial decrease in the amount of TDT collected. If you look at the report, according to Rentalscape, there are approximately 1,245 short-term rentals within unincorporated Brevard County. Again, these are just estimates. They said there are roughly 237 of those are lawful. So in other words, we would be seeing a decrease of about 80%. So this is, you know, this, this, I think Mr., I think Peter would, would tell us, this is about six or seven million dollars that we get in, in revenue from the short-term rental. If we see a decrease of 80%, now, the question is, and this wasn't in the report, whether or not those families then decide to, to move to hotels, or whether those families decide to go to a place where there are short-term rentals outside of Brevard County. I don't think that can be answered. But as far as generating more funds, I think this will have the exact opposite effect, and you will see TDT numbers go down quite a bit.
Commissioner?
Me?
Still, yes, and then you're next.
Thank you. I can't imagine that the funds would go down. I mean, that's, that's a, it's an intangible thing at this particular point in time, because we don't know what the percentages are. There's projections out there. But here's what Airbnb does, and here's what all the other people do on the short-term rentals, when they send their money into the tax collectors, just like Commissioner Felton said. They send in a check, and it does not list the number or the amount of monies that were collected by each and every one of these short-term rentals. It is impossible to check on this unless we have a registration of short-term rentals. We have got to do this. We've got to register these people. Now, I understand what Commissioner Tobias is saying. I think we have to agree to disagree. There is no possible way in the world that's going to go down. The taxes cannot possibly go down. There are too many people out there that are doing short-term rentals. Now, Deckard Technology may not be the company that we're going to use. We can, in fact, sit down and have a, a workshop in regards to what we want to put in the, the, the RFP to, to make it more palatable to the commission. I would almost agree with that at this particular point in time, if we came to a consensus that we want to do something. And perhaps we can do a short-term, perhaps we can do some sort of workshop to figure that out. But guys, we've got to, my God, we're getting killed here. We're getting killed here. The, Airbnb's not being fair by, well, here's what we collected. Yeah, right. Why don't you show me the proof of what's been collected? You know, that's nonsense. So we're just agreeing with everybody, and the TDC gets short-funded, probably almost every time, and all these other people are out there collecting lots and lots of money. And because when we did Deckard Technology, Deckard Techn- And because when we did Deckard Technology, Deckard Technology said, not only do we have, and once again, I'm not promoting Deckard Technology, okay? This was just one of the vendors that we looked at. They come up, they came up with how much they were being rented for, how long they had been rented for, and data that would be key to understanding what we can collect from them in the future. And then they came up with a follow-through that they did where they actually sent out letters to the people and say, we noticed that your property was rented on this, or advertised on this at such and such a day. Are you licensed to be a registered short-term rental person? What the heck is wrong with that? Because here's what's going on. We're getting bamboozled by lots and lots of people. And anybody that doesn't understand that, I, I just think is neglecting their duty, and I'm not specifically saying it to the commission, but we're neglecting our duty to do what's fair to the general public and that is collect the taxes that are absolutely due to this county. And I, I guarantee you, TDC will collect more money. This is not going to, it won't go down. I just, I can't in my wildest dreams imagine that. But my motion would basically be that we work, that we workshop this as soon as possible and come up with a proposal to do it for a year.
County Manager, you chimed in, but I have Commissioner Feltoner first. Is that all right, do you have something?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that what you, what the board might want to consider was, based on the input from today, have staff bring back to the board an RFP that has the scope of what would be included and including the one-year trial period. So, you know, we'll take into account everything that staff said. The board can look at it and we'll bring it back at the, the next available board meeting.
Thank you, sir. That sounds like a good plan.
I'm perfect with that, yes, sir.
Commissioner Feltoner, sir?
I just wanted to say real quick, if we're successful in cleaning up the short-term rentals, the revenue would go down because you won't have the short-term rental tax from the ill-gotten rentals. So that is, that is certainly a possibility, so.
Is that on the illegal ones or something?
Yes, yes ma'am, correct.
Well, it's kind of about having illegal short-term rentals, is that right?
Right, no, no, no. I, I'm just, I'm just pointing, pointing that out. I'm, I'm certainly in favor of cleaning them up.
Are the illegals putting in money?
What's that?
Are the illegals putting in money?
No, I, well, I think, I think they are remitting the tax through Airbnb and VRBO and Expedia if their properties are listed there.
If they're listed, okay.
So what I'm saying is that they're, they're taking place in areas where they, they should not. You know, interestingly, and I'm not beating up on any of those, of those companies, but when you rent one of these, it doesn't tell you the address until you say, yes, I want to rent it. And sometimes not even you get the address until a few days before you're set to arrive. So it'll say that it's in a certain area or zip code or, you know, a certain municipality, but it doesn't give you the, the address. And, you know, I suppose that they do that also to make it harder for local municipalities to, to track those down, so.
This is a good conversation, sir.
But I, I certainly would be in favor of workshop. I think that's the right way to go. Thank you.
Madam Chairperson, I, I think everybody on this commission has agreed that we've got some sort of problem. Whatever the fix is or whatever the recipe is to fix it, we're gonna do it. And as a result, if staff came back with their recommendation and we, we hashed it out at the next commission meeting on some of the things that may please Commissioner Tobias, Commissioner Feltoner and everybody else, at least we'd be moving forward in a positive fashion to fix a problem that's out there today. So I'm all in favor of, of what the county manager suggested.
Okay, I, I do notice in, in my lifetime here, whenever people have tried to talk people into paying them under the table, they don't submit any taxes at all.
Exactly.
That's the purpose of it. So I'm sure there's a few people that'll find out that there's going to be penalties now and make changes as well if, if we try to get this fixed. It's, it's, some areas are really a problem. I mean, if you're a residential with a bunch of kids and you have people coming in and out every weekend with, with large noise, it's, it's not cool. Commissioner Tobias, new light, sir?
Yes, Madam Chair. And I may, I may lose this. I'm just trying to avoid a workshop here. So what I would like to do, and I don't mind losing this, to be very clear, I'm not gonna fight it if I lose it, I just want to give staff his best direction. There's a lot of data points on this stuff and to save staff time, I think we need to, I think we need to identify whether or not we're gonna impose a fee, if we're gonna have new regulations, whether those regulations are gonna be on the permitted use areas or where they're zoned correctly. And if we procure a software company, whether we are going to proactively or, or reactively enforce. Again, I don't mind losing any of these. I just wanna give direction to staff to make that RFP, and I may be missing some data points. I, I just don't want to, you know, have us make, argue this, not argue this stuff, but bring up points a different, and if there's any more things, those are the ones that I've been listening to. I haven't left any out. I just, again, this is just for directions sake.
Thank you, Commissioner Tobias. And in that too, staff would come back and see if it's an ability to use TD, C, TDT tax to cover it or, or with, with the other. That would be the, the, the best fit, I think, that we could do. My thought is to go ahead and give the software a shot and see what it brings back. I can't, it's hard to make decisions without good data, so we, we need some data. So I'm always about trying to get data together. Commissioner Steele and.
Registration is an absolute positive for me. We need to register these short-term rentals.
Okay, register even if we cover the cost the first time?
Correct, absolutely. We need to know who these people are.
Sure, and I do like Commissioner Tobias, I, I don't know why we didn't follow through on this before, of doing a portal where people could look up and see if they're having this trouble, if it's legal or not legal, before they move forward with an idea. So I don't know if that's in the mix with this. I don't remember if we had a cost on that before, but that's really not a bad idea. So anyways, I, I would be in favor if, if we have the staff go for it with bringing back these suggestions in an RFP. And then County Attorney, you can distinguish how, how these fees hopefully can be paid with the registration. And then I, I wouldn't mind being able to look further into doing that portal that Commissioner Tobias talked about. And I apologize, sir, that we had dropped that in the past, because that's a really good idea too. Commissioner Feltoner?
I just want to clarify one thing about the portal, because I think it was, it's been mentioned a couple of times here today about the property praiser. And so it would, it certainly would be helpful if you could go to the property praiser site, that being the one site where you can pull up a parcel and you could, you could find that there. I think if we were just talking about the unincorporated portion of Brevard County, maybe the property praiser might be amenable to that, but 16 other municipalities that have zoning changes, I know from experience, it's, it's been hard for them to keep up with each of their zoning meetings and changes and what's permissible and, and where. So that, I think that would be a more lengthy conversation with the property praiser.
Thank you. Okay, I have no more lights. You want to make a motion to send?
I move that we ask staff to come up with an RFP in regards to the short-term rentals and, and becoming proactive in that. That included in that is a registration fee and additional data that if we got any AI, that it would be confidential to Brevard County government alone and not shared with cities or anybody else. The cities want to do it, they can do it that on their own, so. Not necessarily a workshop, but when it comes back to the next meeting, if there's something that's not, that's got a spur in somebody's thumb, we can alleviate it from the RFP then.
Okay, so the RFP is to hopefully ascertain a, a company that will run this data for us, correct?
Well, no, I think the RFP is gonna be sent out to whoever's in that business, right? Tad, wouldn't that be it?
We would post it and send it out to, to companies that we're aware of.
So once we come up with the RFP and what needs to be in it, after you come up with what you're, not your suggestions, but what all can be done, I think the commission can say, well, okay, AI, that's out or whatever, and, and then we just move forward and then you put it up on the board on whatever we need to do to make it work.
Did you guys get all that in a motion? I didn't think you did. So we're gonna try to clarify this.
All right, let me try this one more time.
Okay.
I move that staff create an RFP to be delivered as soon as possible to Brevard County in regards to being proactive in short-term rentals. That should come to the county as soon as possible. I think that's all I need to say.
Registration fee.
In, in my opinion, we need a registration fee.
But that's not part of the motion.
No, the staff, staff knows, staff knows right now, after this whole conversation, what needs to be part of the RFP. So what we're gonna do one more time is have staff come up with an RFP that, that included some of the discussions that we had today and we will look at it at the next possible meeting or the soonest possible meeting we can and either edit it or send it on as is and, and go forward with an RFP.
Just for the sake of the clerks, Mr. Cockings and Mr. Vate, will that work for a motion? Did we leave something out?
Yes, and we'll discuss at the future meeting, like Commissioner Steele is pointing out, the costs associated with the AI and being proactive, which is what was in the report. So I think that'll be part of the discussion.
That'd be great.
Always have them help me with those, because I always leave something, I always try to make a motion.
Smarter than the average bear.
He is. You got it? Okay, good. So I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Goodson. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Passes 4-0 with Commissioner Tobias in opposition.
Madam Chair?
Oh, please, sir. Sorry, yes, thank you. Always leave him out when he votes, no, but go ahead.
Yeah, well, that's fine. Can I make another motion here?
Yes, sir.
To give staff the ability of reporting any instance of homestead fraud due to the operation of a resort dwelling to the Brevard County Property Appraiser. This shall include retroactive reporting of any past instance of fraud known to the county. Madam Chair?
That sounds like an easy motion. Motion second, Commissioner Feltoner?
Could I modify, could we modify it that it doesn't have to be short-term rental? Rental? Because you can't, you can't rent your homesteaded property.
Sure.
Second hold? Second hold on that, Commissioner Steele?
Yes, second, that's fine.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, sir. Good work, Commission, good conversations. We are moving into board reports. County Manager?
I have no report.
County Attorney?
I have no report, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Goodson?
None, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Feltoner?
No report, Madam.
Commissioner Steele?
I've had enough reports today. No report.
I, I just want to make one comment. We're in such an interesting day as a nation and I just want to send my prayers out to all the people that are dedicating their, their selves to help keep America in a good place and all of the people in military, all the first responders, and I just pray for safety for everybody as we move forward, trying to keep people being able to live free and enjoy their lives. And I'm turning this over to the Vice-Vice Chair, Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things before I get to the Vice-Vice Chair and public comment. First of all, and I should have said this at the beginning, because I did, as he was walking out, see the new mayor, Pat Bentley, up there. But at a special meeting on 10/17, the West Melbourne City Council selected Councilman Pat Bentley to fill the role of mayor for the remainder of the term. Mayor Bentley is a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, has a BS in Business Administration and Management from Rollins College and retired from L3 Harris after 39 years of dedicated service. Mayor Bentley has diligently served on the West Melbourne City Council for more than 15 years. So on behalf of myself and hopefully the board, congratulations to Mayor Bentley. He's the perfect person to drive the bus that is the city of West Melbourne. I will always sit at the table with Mayor Bentley. Second of all, I don't have a handout here, but I do have our resolution voting log for 2023. Kudos to Commissioner Steele, who has plenty of space. There is one commissioner who will go nameless, who has 12, so I may be voting no on, on future ones, just for sake. And getting to the Vice-Vice Chair report, today is National, National Baloney Day, uh, Baloney, Baloney Day, there we go. Sorry, I didn't know there was, didn't, didn't know there was such a thing. Useless Florida fact, Greater Miami is the only metropolitan area in the county with two national parks. Home to the Everglades National Park and Biscayne Bay National Park. This day in Florida history, on this day in 1971, Disney World, in the middle of a three-day grand opening celebration, in addition to dedicating several resorts, Disney World debuted the Electrical Water Pageant, its predecessor to the Main Street Electrical Parade, and hosted its very first firework display called Fantasy in the Sky. Spectacular, big stuff. And county employee recognition, and I imagine Carol is diligently listening to this in the office. Thank you for taking the picture there with Bob. But Carol Richardson is Administrative Assistant to me in District 3. She has 20 years of dedicated service to the county, 11 years animal services until it was shifted to the sheriff's office and nine years in solid waste. And as, about, about her, Carol starred in her office only two months ago and has done an absolutely fantastic job. While she has questionable taste in beer, she's, makes fantastic cookies for the office. She's great with constituents and makes everyone feel welcome when they come in. She's a great addition to our team and I look forward to having her in District 3 for the remainder of our term. She's done a great job. She's fit in and, and she's been absolutely wonderful. So thank you, Carol, and thank you for, she didn't know what the picture was, so we kind of like surprised her on that one. She's now, won't trust us ever again. With that being said, I have one public comment card that is from Sandra Sullivan. It doesn't say what, but you've got three minutes.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So this is a fish kill in the Indian River Lagoon here in Brevard this year. And we made headlines, Indian River Lagoon saw fairly extensive fish kills this year. And I just want to go back to why I got involved with, with the lagoon advocacy. So in 2016, we had a large fish kill and, and the, the tax passed. And in 2017, we had Hurricane Irma, which dumped more than 22 million gallons of treated sewage to the lagoon. And my own community had numerous dumps of about a million gallons to the, to the lagoon. So I was very frustrated. And so I read the lagoon plan, because what was being discussed at that time was the importance of, of infrastructure. You know, we had pipes that were 60 years old with INI influx and infiltration. We just had a storm event recent weeks ago where the manhole covers in my community were overflowing with sewage, as were other communities. And so infrastructure was very important to me and I came to meetings because when I read the first lagoon plan, I saw that, where's infrastructure? We're talking about infrastructure. That's all we talk about is infrastructure. And I was told, you know, we, this isn't an infrastructure tax. And in fact, when I came in, when I saw that the, the plan had 66% going to muck dredging and Chair Pritchett said at the time, she said, well, we, we didn't vote for the infrastructure tax. We might get sued if we did that. So I'll clip it. To restore the, this was what we voted for, and I came to the next meeting after that and I said, to restore the Indian River Lagoon through financing, planning, constructing, maintaining and operating capital improvements and capital maintenance projects. Capital is infrastructure. So the other day I was reading minutes back to 2016 and I just about had a heart attack. Scott Knox, County Attorney, stated that regarding the, adopted the Indian River Lagoon bracket, IRL, infrastructure surtax. Got it? Infrastructure surtax. And I was shocked, okay? And then in the minutes, they go on and they're talking about, Commissioner Infatini talking about, because of the language of the statute, she does not believe that the tax, that the use of the tax for muck dredging is legally permissible. The statutory language specifically states if bonding out of a revenue stream, the bond proceeds. revenue stream, the bond proceeds must be used on capital improvements. Maintaining and dredging the lagoon is a maintenance project.
Thank you, Sandra. And as there are no more comments, I call the meeting adjourned at 10:48 a.m.